This is Monday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and you will stand with us while Councilor Congress latest in the vacation and then play.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all your many blessings on on each one of us, Lord, and our city as a whole. Lord, this week's fair week, we pray that you will be with all of our citizens and the public safety and first responders that will be working that event. Pray that you will grant us a safe week at the fair, Lord, and good fellowship with one another. Pray to your Lord, you will be with us tonight as we go through this city council meeting, that you will grant us clarity and wisdom in our decisions, Father, that we will carry out business, Lord, what's in the best interest of the people in accordance to your will, Father. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, we will begin with the consent agenda. We would entertain a motion approved with written, or if you have something that needs to be removed and put on the regular agenda, you can let us know at this time.
Mayor, I have one thing I'd like to move to regular.
Okay.
If we can move I one, position description update, please move that underneath on the regular.
Okay, so like seven?
Yes, sir, it'd be three C seven.
Three C seven, okay. Motion to approve with those changes?
Second.
I have a motion and second. I think we are at, who are we at? Did we do last?
I think it's Mr. Harrison.
You go ahead. I'll go with Mr. Harrison. All right, starting with Mr. Harrison.
All right.
Aye.
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 As Kerry, thank you very much. And now, as we go to the regular agenda, besides the one I add, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, we we entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda with the one addition.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. All right?
Aye.
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 As Kerry, thank you very much. Now we'll go to three C one. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a kind of a, to bring to the council's attention, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, the senior center, Ms. Bacalow worked with the members, and they would like to make two notable changes to the senior center. First being dropping the word senior from the title to make it Life and Enrichment Center. And then the second one is to adopt a new logo for the center, and if you'll scroll down, you'll see that there. So can do this in our day to day, but we wanted some of the council's input and see if you had any questions or comments. And if not, we'll move forward. If so, we can talk about those and bring back if needed.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion is second. Questions or comments?
Ms. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So I I fully support the 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 request and think it think it's a good idea. I think the one thing that I that I mentioned to Kobe during our meeting was, let's make sure that this follows in with the same pattern that we have for all of the other branded entities within the city. So, for example, the airport, Lake Fest, I'm trying to think of what else. Several years ago, we we adopted a new city seal coloring font, and then we also adopted several logos for the specific functions of the city. So to me, this needs to be matching with what is we've already previously adopted. So that that would be my only request is that we somehow make this kind of fall in line with that. I would like to see it is the Daphne Ex Springs Life and Enrichment Center, so we would like to see our city seal on it or or something, something acknowledging the fact that it is a city function.
Is it city or county? I mean, we're servicing everybody, though, right?
But it's our it's our Life and Enrichment Center.
Yeah.
Yeah, they they contribute quite a bit, county does, but doesn't matter to me either way. But did you do that in the form of motion?
Well, there's already motion on the table, so I was hoping that we could just have some discussion.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Is it, is it, does it not conform now? What?
Not not generally. I would I would just ask that it, we look at it and make sure that it is framed and informed, just like Lake Fest, just like the airport, all those other functions. We have, we have logos and designs for them, so let's just keep it consistent with those.
And I might not have been here when we've done those branding. Can could you bring that back to us, Kobe, or can we approve it with with that with that change as a?
Yeah, if you are good with it, we'll get we'll get with Susan, and we'll get with Denise and Christie. Look at the color, the color choices for the logo, the official colors, the fonts and stuff, and mate, we can look at some changes to and bring it back.
And I'm not, I'm not saying.
Well, can we approve it with those, with your motion or with your addition? I'll add what he's asking for into the motion.
The branding, just that it's consistent conforms with the other.
Yeah, I'll add that to to the original motion.
Did it?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We will, we'll move forward with drop the word senior, go and do that. And then the next meeting or so, hopefully the next meeting, we'll bring back something with the colors and somehow incorporate the name of the city in there.
And not just that, Kobe, would you please bring back all of them, because I might not have been here, and I'd like to see all of them.
I think that was done back in twenty nineteen, so it's been a minute.
Exactly, so it would be a good educational for all of us.
Yeah, I believe it would be the, obviously, the cities were done at the time, Lake Fest, airport, I think CRA too at the same time.
Yep, yep, that's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can bring it back.
Any other comments? Question from anyone? All in favor, say aye.
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 As Kerry, thank you very much. Back to you, Kobe, on the seat two.
Thank you, Mayor. This is RFQ twenty twenty-five oh six PW asbestos concrete water main replacement project design and CEI agreement. The council, a few weeks back, awarded this project to Anchor CEI. They have given us the contract back. I provided that to Mr. Atkinson. I believe Mr. Atkinson has reviewed it, and we, the fee proposed by Anchor is an amount of five hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. And the council recall, we budgeted this year, we received an SRF last year in the amount, fifty fifty, and the amount of seven hundred and sixty-six thousand. So this is roughly two hundred thousand dollars less than what Duberry submitted an application for us anticipated. So if you have any particular questions on it, I know Brian is here as well tonight with Anchor, he he can gladly answer any of those questions.
Question?
I do. Kobe and I talked about this in our draft agenda meeting. The six and eight inch, six, eight, ten inch ductile iron is what they recommend over PVC. Is that kind of, which I would say yes, myself, but my question is really for Chief Sheffield. Kobe and I talked about this. By by doing these requested upgrades, it allows for future growth, right, expansion of fire hydrant system? And so my question is, Chief, if you don't mind, if if, does that in any way potentially lower our fire rating by by having those sized pipes at this point in time, if we go ahead and install those? Can that reduce our fire rating at some point?
Which I think he's asking about the size of the pipe, but in turn, the number of fire hydrants, right? The rating more related to the number of fire hydrants rather than pipe size?
Or is, you know, because I don't know, is there a ratio per square mile or density related to how many hydrants you have to have?
So basically, the diameter, the diameter of the pipe is a maximum, a minimum of six inches on it. Depends on where it's located at. We like to see a fire hydrant, a minimum of every six hundred, but three hundred feet above, a distance between each fire hydrant.
Brian, would that be, as part of the design, we'll incorporate fire hydrants in accordance with the LDC, any fire standards?
Yeah, absolutely. So Duberry's already done a little bit of a study on it as part of that that grant, and then three notches as well is doing a study of the of the water line. So we're with both of them to make sure everything's adequately sized and spaced.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I was just, I was just concerned, not concerned, but I mean, that's kind of exciting that if we if we up the ante and go with their recommendation on this, I think, hopefully, that would help us at least maintain the the rating that we have and which affects homeowner insurance and business insurance and all that kind of stuff. So good.
And hopefully, in our water study as well, that y'all approved in consent agenda, they'll also identify, and we can work with Chief Sheffield and consultants too, about areas of the city that may lack fire hydrants or the distance in between of those fire hydrants. And like I said, some of the projects we're doing is your particular the Hill Street upgrade and replacement project for the water line. It is to also add fire hydrants that don't currently exist, so that should also help if more we add throughout the city.
Thank you.
Mayor, you go ahead.
So is it going to be six inches in diameter citywide?
No, so I think it's going to, it's going to depend on the area. It'll it'll vary based on the area that demand within certain areas of the city.
The reason I'm asking is because you brought up the good point about allowing for growth by having a larger pipe as development continues. So that was question number one. I'll wait for you to for question number two.
No, so so Duberry's study did identify some areas to be to be upgraded, upsized. So we will incorporate that, and that did include some growth. Like I said, three notches may get further along and then say, hey, there needs to be some other stuff. So there'll be some time to to do that as well, to take a look at that stuff.
The reason I bring that up is because as growth continues, we don't want to go back and dig up streets and replace a three inch pipe with a six inch pipe. If we all did it, you know, planning for growth ahead of time, that would be a plus. The second thing is, these asbestos pipes that's providing all of our drinking water, do we know where all these asbestos, asbestos pipes are, or is it a citywide thing? Is it, is it a certain area of the city, or is it everywhere?
Duberry's preliminary design, not design, I would say design, but the preliminary work and and our application and prior work that had been done by Duberry in the past, that's what I think Brian was getting at. They kind of already identified where a lot of that is existing. It's more so in the older parts of town, because at a certain point, they got, you know, became illegal. Therefore, our outer banks of the system, we don't ever have those. So it's more so on your inner side, inner of the city and your oldest parts of the system. A lot of that's already been identified as to where it's at. What they're going to do in part of the process is not only make sure that's where it's actually at, see if there's any damages to it, but also more so is the design work in relation to our replacement of them. So surveying, design, geotek, all that stuff, and we get ready to dig it up and replace it.
So would it be safe to say that all the asbestos pipes are in the historic districts, since that's the oldest part of the city?
I wouldn't say they're all there, but I would assume the majority of them are.
Yeah, but the majority of them are also right along the the highway here. There's a, there's a big chunk that's asbestos, and then just, just north of the of the highway too, here on the on the west side.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Anyone else?
I think it'd be important to note, Mayor, because this, we're not, this is not unusual. We're not the only ones doing this. This is all over the state, all over the country. This is a mandate from the federal government years back. So we're not the only ones having to do this.
We have a P A system down here. Can we run it up a little bit? Can't hear? Can't hear. All right, guys, keep them mics close to you. You hear me now? I hear you now. All right, okay. All right, anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
As Kerry, thank you very much. All right, Kobe, we'll go to C three?
Thank you, Mayor. C three is a Trustmark Bank Treasury Services Contract Extension. The council recall in twenty-four, our agreement with Trustmark was coming to an end. So that time, we engaged the bank for a twelve month extension, at which time they were, they were amenable to do that, and the council approved that. But that time, the change being, we then started collecting interest on our operating accounts. We then started, you know, going through the year, we did not get in time an RFQ out for banking services, but the contract that ends in December of this year. And so I'm asking for another extension on that twelve months. We've worked with the bank's representative. I spoke to Mr. Atkinson. He seems comfortable with it. And I'll note that the maintenance fees for the for the accounts are still zero. The bank has continued to waive all those fees associated with our account, and our interest rate on operating will actually increase from three point one percent to three point two five percent. So just ask for approval of that contract extension for twelve months.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, go ahead.
I just want to share with everybody that I had talked to Kobe, you know, nine thirty, we just done, finished our fiscal year end, and we still have now gone a whole year without a finance director. And I know that Kobe has placed this on the agenda a little bit further down, because Danielle, working by herself, and what she had to tackle, I know the whole team was not able to go out for RFP, but that doesn't mean that we still don't need to do this. And I wish that it was done. I understand that we that that we got pushed to this place, but as soon as we can, we need to get a finance director and get these things started, because, again, she's going to be faced with, now we're year end, our audit's going to start come January, February, and I just don't want to see it keep getting prolonged. So that's my only comments to share.
Any other comment? Question from anyone? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
As Kerry. All right, Kobe, we'll go to C four.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a memorandum of agreement with the Community Redevelopment Agency in relation to abatement. So this conversation started back a few months ago with the Code Review and Land Use Committee. You know, we, and then ultimately, the city council approved and updated ordinance for the abatement process for the city. And then at the same time thereafter, you approved a policy for that abatement and, you know, the criteria, how we go about doing it, and the parameters. And so ultimately, what we'd like to do, speaking with Mr. Irvin, the CRA, and the Code Review and Land Use Committee, is we would like to have an agreement with the with the CRA that when the city's magistrate orders an abatement, and in this instance, has to meet the criteria set forth in the policy. But when she does that, we would like the ability to give that abatement order to the CRA and let them fulfill that responsibility on the city's behalf. And so the CRA, in this agreement, would have the the decision to budget as much as they like every fiscal year on abatements. We will work closely with our code enforcement officer and the CRA executive director on that, what we expect the number to be and of every year. And so ultimately, we would like to approve this, so they could do those abatements. When the abatement's completed, the CRA will provide to code enforcement the cost of that abatement, at which time we would then proceed to a non-abnormal tax assessment, which is what you have approved within the policy, given that the proper owner, property owner doesn't come forth for that and pays the difference. And so that is what this agreement is before you, and we are looking for approval of the memorandum of agreement.
Motion to approve memorandum agreement related to abatement? Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Yeah, go ahead.
I just have a comment. I'm not a fan of giving away our responsibility to the other agencies, so my vote will reflect such.
Ms. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is not a giving away of our responsibilities. This is actually working together with the CRA to address identified problems. So from the Code Review and Land Use Committee, we identified a situation where we have properties within the city that are in violation of our codes, and they sit there and continue to rack up hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of fines in many cases. That's reflected in in the city manager's monthly report. There's millions of dollars of fines sitting out there. So what was proposed and what what has been worked out is to address these concerns, these code violations, before they reach six figure sums. So the CRA can step in and say, you have a code violation, we're going to abate it, and then we will take the necessary precautions to protect the taxpayer in terms of liens and and tax deeds. So this is a way to keep the city from becoming derelict looking while taking our CRA dollars, which are specifically, when it when it was formed, were there to address blight. And to address blight before it gets out of hand, before it becomes a hundred thousand dollar fine, before a roof is caving in. It's not, it's not a giving away of our responsibilities.
And to be clear, the city cannot lawfully appropriate funds for the use of private properties, even if we do deem them to be blight or abatement. We can only authorize abatement, but somebody still has to fund it, whether it be a property owner, a not-for-profit, or some other organization. So all this is doing, when you look at their responsibilities, they're providing the financial assistance, they're engaging in the contracts, and they're required to provide us all the documentation and ensure compliance. So they're actually doing something we could not do, as opposed to them taking something over for us.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
My comment to that would be, we have a code enforcement officer, we have a code enforcement team, and I think that we should give them the responsibility to do this function. They've, they've had this responsibility for some time, but I don't think they, we've ever, like, empowered them to do the job, to do that. But I know he does a lot of work in that respect, and I think he should be the one that's doing this.
Well, he is going to be doing the first half of this. To be clear, if you look at the city's responsibilities, identify violations, issue notices, coordinate hearings, make recommendations for properties for abatements, monitor the abatement activities, and assist in cost recovery, pretty much every bit of that falls right on Mr. Strong. So he will continue doing everything he currently is doing. The only thing the CRA is doing is providing financial assistance to the person in violation. And so now, if the council wishes to allocate, I don't see how we're going to allocate general fund money to private properties. But if we have another pot of money that we think we can dip into, then I'm willing to look at that and the legality of it. But Mr. Strong will continue doing everything he's currently doing. Go ahead, John.
And again, the purpose of this is to remediate the blight, to fix the original problem, so that not only does their property values, the issue with the liens continuing to rack up and the fines, but also the neighbors that are surrounding those properties, so that their property values stay at a higher rate than what they would from being next door to blighted properties in issues. So that that's the original purpose of the program and and why it's being done this way.
Yes, ma'am.
And then how do we discriminate against those people that aren't in the CRA district that have this problem?
Pretty much covers everything.
The CRA covers the entire city limits with.
They don't cover Pine Shores.
Because Pine Shores was determined at the time the study was done not to have blight.
But there could potentially be others outside of that limit.
That's completely appropriated into the law. It is not discriminatory for the city to designate an area for community redevelopment. That's within your statutory authority, and the city has done that. City can always add areas to the CRA if it wanted, but I will say, we have one of the most expansive CRA boundaries of any local government in Florida. We effectively covered the whole city.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever seen anything like it.
No, no, nobody else says either, Mayor. We hear that all the time. But anyone else? Any other comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
As Kerry, thank you very much. Okay, Kobe, we'll go to C five.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a memorandum of understanding with the Community Redevelopment Agency in relation to lien reduction. So again, the council, a few months back, at the same time as the abatement policy, approved a lien reduction policy. That policy is geared toward the ability for staff to work with property owners who may have outstanding liens of a certain amount, to come forth and try to get those reduced, reduced, showing that they put good effort into the property, they put money, they they've done what they can do to help bring that down and correct the violations. Also, other thing we see, you know, people buy properties off of tax deeds, right, and may not do their due diligence, but they bought the property, they've either got rid of it completely and built a new house. So we want, the city, we all pass this to incentivize people to do so, to to bring properties of useful value to the city. And so we've been working through that with at least one person and maybe more at this point in that new policy. The CRA would like to have an agreement separately in that same fashion with the city. Ultimately, if properties were to meet certain criteria laid out, and then go through the proper process, that the city would reduce liens on properties that the CRA may purchase to fix violations to a number of two thousand five hundred dollars. That number comes from what we estimate to be our average cost per parcel when doing code enforcement violations, from the time that Mr. Strong starts the process through notices and mailings and magistrate hearings. And so we we first did this number, twenty-five hundred dollars, when the CRA purchased those properties across from the courthouse, if you all recall that, they bought those, cleared them off, worked with the county in that case. And so that's the number they've come back forth in this agreement as well. And so this is before y'all to consider. Staff would see favorable to this, because we believe it's it's working to the mission of both CRA and the city to help get some blighted properties cleaned up and back on the tax rolls. And so this is for y'all's consideration for lien reduction agreement with CRA.
Motion to approve lien reduction agreement?
Second.
I have a motion, second. Questions, comments?
A question on on properties that the CRA might acquire. What about the turnaround time for those properties? I mean, because the whole idea here is to increase property values, right, and and get that, get back on the tax roll and generating money? So would there be, or is there a limitation on the number of months or years that they could hold on to a property without doing something else with it?
The CRA, that is?
The CRA, yes.
No, there's not a general prohibition against them holding it for any period of time. I imagine the real challenge, not prohibition, is going to be an audit flag. If you've expended CRA money, has acquired properties, not cleaned them up and are turning the tax roll, you might get by your first audit, but by the time you get to that second audit, you're going to be in violation of the trust fund restrictions on the use of your money.
Okay, well, that answers my question then. So that's, that's pretty.
Yeah, now, can I tell you it's going to happen within the same year? No, I think, you know, like anything, you're going to have a management response to an audit. If they say, hey, we've tried to sell the property five different times, and three contracts have fallen through, and, you know, two people didn't show up. But no, the whole purpose of that money, if they spend any money from that, and it does not show a use, they've got an annual audit, just like you do, and that's where you have that identified.
Good deal.
Any other comments, questions?
Just one?
Go ahead.
Have have we had any of those issues, Clay?
No, I'm aware of. No, I'm not seeing where, I mean, the CRA's bought property that is intending to utilize, certainly the antique store that they intend to utilize directly, and that was a specific part of their plan they were allowed to do. But I'm unaware of the CRA, having acquired any other properties, they've not transferred back out. The only two pieces that did not transfer back out on the tax roll were the two pieces that went to the county. But they were transmitted out and cleaned up and became part of that master plan that the county already has.
Thank you.
Anyone? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
As Kerry, thank you very much. Kobe, we'll go to the finance director's position.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update on the finance director's position. So as of this morning, speaking with Ms. Chance, we have not had any more qualified applicants based off the 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 job description requirements. And then I know Councilwoman Hevland and I discussed about this, about where we are noticing the paper, or noticing the advertisement. We do that in our local newspaper on Indeed, the GFOA website, FCCMA, Florida League of Cities, Cities website, and Employ Florida. Ms. Chance has also reached out to surrounding cities and counties that she has contacts with, to see if they've had any, you know, applicants on file from previous jobs, postings or the like, and they have not provided, they do not have any. So that's, that's where we stand on the finance director position, and I tend to give an update pretty frequently. So any questions, we can go from there, but just an update.
So how many, how many candidates have we received that did not meet qualifications but applied?
I I didn't get into the, she just told me what didn't qualify. I know the week prior, there was none, I want to believe. Last week, there was one that did not. I'll have to verify that and ask if I just asked if I qualified.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Counsel, what else do we believe we might be able to do to attract somebody? I don't know what made y'all go out, like you hired that, pre me, I know you hired a committee or a firm, actually, to go out a headhunter, basically. And I know that was a lot of money, so I'm not advocating for that, but it's been over a year now since this.
We we piggybacked on a county contract to use a a firm that the county was using, and I think the general sentiment was, we, nobody was happy with the performance of that firm. For me personally, I don't, I I consider that an outlier. I was, in my professional job, I was hired by a headhunter, so I I think that they serve a useful purpose. So I don't think we need to be afraid of them just because we had one bad experience with them. So, I mean, I I'm willing to discuss and debate whether we consider doing that. I can tell you that the quotes that came back in for the EDA position, when we were considering it at the EDA, they were averaging between twenty and thirty thousand dollars. And then they varied. Some were fixed, fixed price, some were a percentage of the salary, right? So, you know, they they sometimes have access to a talent pool that we we wouldn't otherwise have access to.
Well, I think we've been trying this for over a year now, and I think we need to try a different strategy, because we absolutely need to. I mean, here we are, year end, audit time, going to have to go out for bid for banking service. There's a lot to do. And I'm concerned that she's not going to be able to, she's going to get overwhelmed.
So I believe the the proper process, Clay, correct me if I'm wrong here, would be for us to would be for us to task staff with coming up with an RFP for a search firm to fill this position.
That is correct.
So I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second questions or comments. Maudias? From anyone?
I mean, Kobe, do you need any more information other than that?
No, I've seen them pretty regularly, so I can reach out some contacts, get them from other cities, and then I think I have a few contacts myself we can pass out to firms that may be interested.
Before we vote on it, is there, do you know, can we piggyback on somebody else's? Is there another city that might already have one in play or the county again or?
I mean, yeah, I mean, there's plenty from people I communicate with and see on my connections that cities and counties all over state that hire these firms. So I mean, assuming we find that we reach out to them, get the contract they have with them, then yes.
You know, because, I mean, it's easy if Julie knows who her contacts are and she's already reached out to them to see if they have the talent pool, then maybe, you know, they'd be willing to share.
So it's up to y'all, if you want me to bring back an RFP to put out or I'll.
I think we should add it.
You think we should what?
Reach out and find contracts.
Maybe modify his motion to add if that's a viable option.
Well, you're still going to have to approve the piggyback in public. So what he's proposing, I think his motion covers both. If they can bring you back a contract without having to develop one, that may well be the situation.
But we could, at our next meeting or whatever, then piggyback, say, okay, we don't, we're not going to go from scratch, we're just going to piggyback off of this guy or we're going to mimic this guy and go out.
We're not going to go from scratch, just to be candid. We're just going to use what we did last time and update it. Be quite blunt, I mean.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with piggybacking. I'm fine with going out on our own. I will say, I guess maybe the only thing that I would request is that staff contemplate and put in some, I wouldn't call it aggressive, but some timelines for communicating with us. That was one of the issues last time was that we felt like we were just kind of sitting in limbo waiting on that particular firm to communicate with us and provide candidates and a list of candidates and then process those candidates. So I'm going to leave that up to staff, but I'm going to ask staff to not let it be just unopen-ended to where they have, you know, 30, 60, 90 days, like, you know, they need to be communicating with us on a regular basis. And whatever is appropriate, I'll defer to.
And regular for me, I ask Kobe to put this on the agenda every week now. Every time we meet, I would like to see the update, what has happened in the prior two weeks. So for me, routine or regular would be every two weeks. So I agree.
Any other comment?
In the meantime, we're going to simultaneously continue to be advertising like we're doing now.
Correct.
Got you.
Any other comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Kim Winterburg, citizen. This may not be the brightest question, but how, do we know how competitive the salary is compared to other cities? And is that an issue? Would it make sense, and I don't know, would it make sense to just simply bump up the salary $25,000 and see what we could get versus, and I'm just throwing this out here. I'm not saying it's $25,000, but I think you guys know where I'm going with this. I don't know the answer to that, but I'm asking.
We have a lot of data from surrounding cities and counties that Ms. Chance has pulled together. So we can go through there and do our own, you know, average median stuff like that. But we have budgeted last year and this year the top of the range for this position both years. So from my perspective, we are within a competitive range, but, you know, but who knows? We may not be anymore. But considering surrounding cities that I've communicated with and saying, we seem to be in a competitive range. But, you know, that might have been a year ago too.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, from my real estate perspective, if you get a lower offer, yeah, you may not want to take it, but how much is it going to cost you to hold it until you get the next offer? So that's kind of how I'm thinking about it. How much is it going to cost us to not have that person in place? So just a thought, that's all. Thank you.
Any other?
Yes, ma'am.
Kobe, do you know how much we, how much did you budget just for the salary, not for the benefits?
I can give you, it's $109,000.
Like a one and a quarter or?
$109,000, some change.
$109,000 change?
And that's just the salary, it's not considering everything else.
And that's the top, you said, of the scale? And some of these that were higher, and I noticed you did go above the scale because you've had to bring them back forward. So if that was the case, then, you know, I don't know where the funding would come from, but.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
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 Hi, it's Kerry. Thank you very much. And then we will go to.
I have a number seven, Mayor.
Seven one. All right.
So this was what would have been two, I, one, position description updates. All I'm asking is if we would approve the job description for the assistant fire chief draft 10/20/25, and then do not approve the inmate supervisor draft. We will bring that back to the next meeting.
Motion to approve with those changes.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Questions, comments? Anyone?
Yeah.
Kobe, can you tell us each of the positions that are on here?
Uh, this, so assistant fire chief and inmate supervisor.
Those are the only two?
Only two.
And the inmate supervisor, we've always had that, you just modified it.
Correct, Ms. Chance, you know, as we've been in the last year or so, every time positions come vacant, she likes to, we want to go and update with new information and our legalities and stuff. But she mistakenly left in the terms transportation and some other stuff that no longer applies to us because we've changed things during the budget and reorg. And so we just want to make sure we got it clean before y'all approve it.
And you're calling it a foreman?
No, ma'am. So it's, would report to.
Oh, that's who it reports to.
Yeah, it would be the parks and grounds foreman. So as I said, she left some work transportation in there, but all that should reference parks and grounds. So we'll bring that back.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Hi, it's Kerry. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kobe. All right, request to be on the agenda. We have been neighbor, Hope Housing Alliance. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Do you want to present or, I'm sorry, I don't really know the format here.
Well, just share what you're hoping to get done.
Okay, sure. So Hope Housing Lines is a nonprofit housing developer. We're based out of Paw Beach County. And we are tax credit developers and hoping to potentially build some elderly housing here in Dufuniac Springs off of 90. And so we've identified a parcel. We think it's well-suited for 60 units of affordable elderly housing. Part of our application process requires, and let me just correct this, in the form here, I put that it requires, it doesn't actually require a contribution from the local government, but because of the scoring that happens, if you're not maximizing your points, you're basically not going to get funded. And so essentially, it is kind of a requirement to get this local government contribution of $5,000. The $5,000 can come in the way of either an impact fee waiver, a grant or loan, the net present value of a loan, just to be clear, $5,000. And each county sets this local government contribution at different levels based on the size of the county. So Walton County, it would be considered a small county, so $5,000 is what they're asking for for Walton County. And this is the state agency, Florida Housing Finance Corporation. And I believe that you guys went through the same process for Arbers at Emerald Springs, the 84-unit apartment building that's being funded and built. And so exactly the same thing here. It's just instead of family housing, it'd be elderly housing. So Dufuniac has, I believe, four tax credit projects that were built, and they're placed in service around 2009, 2010. Nothing has been built to date, so the housing, affordable housing stock, there's about 150 units in service today with a population of, you know, 6, 7,000 folks. That's less than 2% of the housing stock dedicated for affordable units. And so our hope is to, with your help, get a $5,000 impact fee waiver, apply for this affordable housing, excuse me, apply for this affordable housing tax credit financing. If we get awarded, then we would move forward with the project. If we're not awarded, then the impact fee waiver is, you know, null and void. And so that's the request here today.
Clay, there's no complications in being now capacity. No, I mean, we have more flexibility now that it's capacity being an impact fee. We used to have problems doing this with this an impact fee. I just requested the council approves it, that we would waive $5,000 of the total capacity fees. Because the capacity fees may well exceed $5,000, so.
And they typically do, just to be clear.
But this is common, we've done it before.
Yeah.
Do we have, I just kind of want to reiterate that point that this was a waiver of $5,000 out of the total. It's not a complete.
Correct. It is a $5,000 credit we're basically providing them to the capacity fees.
Do we have a rough idea of at 60 units, what that would be? What was the total capacity fee? Do we know?
Should be able to.
I don't know if Chris is going to have the exact number, but like Arbers that we mentioned that we did do that for, I believe Arbers is like the 84 units. And after the $5,000 waiver, they still paid just shy of $800,000. So you're probably going to be around.
It's going to be over $10,000 for water and sewer combined, right? Ever capacity fee, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so the combined total was going to be north of $10,000 per unit, so.
It'll get $600,000.
Yeah, so it's.
It's $600,000.
So $595 or $600? Half of one of those 60 units.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So motion to approve capacity fee waiver for $5,000 to the Hope Housing Alliance.
Second.
Comments?
All right, go ahead.
I appreciate you coming forward and asking. In my opinion, the city's not fiscally able to waive such fees that we still find ourselves in a bit of a crunch where we're trying to save money. So I won't be supporting their motion.
Thank you for that.
But thank you for what you're doing.
Sure.
Comment, question?
If, I got a couple more. If you wanted to get the funding, how would that impact your, say you don't score well enough to get your grants, would you continue to move forward with this project irregardless?
No, this would essentially just put a stop on the project. There's no point in us applying if we don't get this.
And what does affordable housing look like to the seniors under this development that you're looking at doing?
So this would be a 60-unit development. It would be a mix, a unit mix of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms. And, you know, rents would start at, call it $380,000 or so, plus or minus, that's on the lower end, up to maybe $1,000 a unit, $1,200 a unit, depending on the size of the unit.
And from what I've seen, these are for individuals 55-plus.
That's correct.
What's your typical age range of?
It's 55. It's restricted, income restricted, and for folks that are 55-plus. So the difference here between what you guys have today is that this is elderly housing for folks, there is no elderly housing in Dufuniac today. And so this would, this is the kind of differentiating factor here.
And what's that age or what is that, the income for your typical impact based off of the restrictions?
So everything's based off of the area median income in the local municipality. And I believe the AMI median income I hear is around $35,000, $38,000 or something like that. So it'd be 80% of that and lower. So everything's 80% and lower. And actually, I believe, let me correct myself, it's at 60% and lower for this project. So it's really for folks who need it. And it goes, it dips all the way down to 22% of area median income as well.
I'll be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
We're all 90 is.
Whoa, 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 whoa. You need to come to the podium. Let's make a comment.
I'm happy to answer. It's right off of 20th Street, like 20th and 90th.
Thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Hi, it's Kerry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council members. Have a great evening.
Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
It kicked off there. Okay, all right, we are going to 5B and Tim Parsons from Liberty Partners.
Good evening, counsel. Just a continuation of the conversation that we had at the last council meeting regarding the city's major project funding list requests, as well as the city's 2026 legislative appropriation request. I think since that last meeting, Kobe and our team done a little work on the list, made the changes that were expressed by the council. And now we just need to get those two or three projects finalized for the legislative session. Mayor, you'll be in front of the delegation next Wednesday, offering these for support. So tonight, we just need to get those finalized. And just to refresh, remember, it sounded like there was a general consensus around the affluent line being the top main priority again this session, as well as support for the AC water main to also be one of the projects. And then there was a little bit of discussion around the fire truck. And so just want to pick that up tonight.
Right. Jesse, will you go to the last page of the PDF? All the way to the end. Can't miss it. Yep. So, counsel, I took the major funding list we talked about from the old one. Tried to put it in a format of our CIP just to be consistent. Added some information and the funding sources, where they came from, how much we've secured, unsecured. And then I ranked them based off of the priorities of the city at the moment. Now, if the council feels differently, we can definitely change those. But I present this to you, unless Tim has objection, I recommend we approve the major funding list document fiscal year 2026 with that being affluent line as A, number one, AC water main replacement as B, number two, the runway expansion widening project, C, number three, and then the hangars 18, 19, 20 development as D. And then everything else falls in line from there.
Motion to approve with those suggestions.
Second.
Motion, go ahead.
Kobe, we didn't add anything fire department on there, did we?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Anything, everything you see here on this list is also on the CIP that you all approved prior to the budget.
Okay, so you removed all those things.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other question or comment? From anyone? All in favor, say aye.
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 Hi, it's Kerry. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tim. What else you got, Mayor?
Just based off of that, we still need the two or three for your 2026 legislative priorities to take those forward. No, I heard, I heard A, B, C, and D. But I think A and B were ones that y'all wanted to submit. Just wanted to see if there was a C or a third, a third legislative appropriation request.
I would say it would be the continued projects at the airport. So the runway lengthening and widening would be a C.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, it's a little bit vulnerable if we don't get this done. Could mean it costs us a ton of money. So it is critical that we get this finished. And it's something they seem to like. That makes a big difference too. Yeah.
So we need that in a form of a motion.
Motion for those three.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so in that motion, you're covering one, two, and three? Affluent one.
AC water main two and runway 927 expansion widening, number three. Okay.
Look good, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Any other question or comment on that?
Just a comment, you know, I brought up the fire engine appropriation request, but, you know, Kobe and I have talked about this, and it appears that we're really a year out from that probably. Then it takes some time, you might clarify our conversation, but it might, it takes some time to, once you order it, it takes a while to get it in. But, so because of that, and we have some time before we actually have to replace that engine, it makes more sense possibly look at that for next year.
Yes. If I recall correctly, there was a discussion about a grant or is the city going after that again this year? I think maybe the final year. I think maybe the final year.
AFT grant again, uh, you know, we may or may not get it. We have not been successful the last two years, uh, and Councilman, Councilman Harrison's comments, we talked about, um, the chief and I, the chief has presented to me the five or ten-year plan that we talked about, uh, so we've been finalizing that. Um, we've been going forward and gathering information that the council directed us to do. Um, and then on top of that, we talked about what the CRA is gonna look at the building. So for me, and I think the fire chief may agree, may disagree, um, it may be a little premature if we were to get a truck, right? There is, there's time required to get it, whether we buy a truck from the lot or not, it still takes time. Uh, and, but the building is not situated at this moment to even fit a thirty-two-foot truck, which is, there's no need in getting a much smaller one than that. So we'd be putting, we wouldn't have anywhere to put it, so.
That's right.
It's gonna take some time, but that's, I think that's what Councilman and I talked about, uh, the reason for this year.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Any other comment?
Mayor?
Yes.
So it's the affluent line and the asbestos pipes?
AC water.
AC water, yeah.
And then in order to complete the runway, we need, uh, two-point-one B?
Two-point-six, I think maybe the exact number.
Two-point-six.
Based off of what we're looking at right now.
And those are the three things we're asking the legislation for?
Those are our top three properties, making three APR requests.
And it doesn't have anything to do with hangars, just the extension on the runway?
Correct, correct.
Hmm.
The widening and length.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
Just want Tim's here to verify, Tim, uh, still understand the council stance on the Harbison Field property from a few meetings ago.
Re-say that, was that a question?
The Harbison Field, you clearly were trying to have that turned over to the city for our use.
Yes, yes, and, uh, we, we.
Not a request for money, but we wanna make sure that's still.
In addition, in addition to, I understand that that language is being drafted now, uh, city should have it in advance of the delegation meeting next Wednesday, but at that time, the delegation will, uh, will present and consider that, that bill. So, uh, that, that will be in addition to these, uh, requests.
Is that you helping with that or is that Representative Abbott?
I believe he's talking Representative Abbott, Senator Trump.
Yep.
Oh.
And we're, and we're working with them, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right, on this motion, any other comment? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Hi, Scott Carey, thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, Josh in the house? There he is, Josh Irvin. C one.
Josh Irvin, for the record, good evening, mayor, council members of the public. I'm before you tonight, uh, with the new concept, we're calling Concept D. After our last meeting back on September the eighth, you all gave some recommendations to keep the angled parking along the northern portion of the section of Baldwin between Seventh and Eighth. We actually reached out to our engineering consultant, uh, and asked him to make that recommendation, uh, on, on the site plan. That came back with a net gain of six parking spaces. I took that to my board back at the end of last month and they did not approve that. We went back with, uh, a Concept E, which keeps angled parking on both the north and the south, but we did remove the two additional accessible parking spaces along that northern portion for a net gain of eleven spaces. So we're requesting to reconsider the previous decision and accept what the board is, uh, asking for here, which is on the screen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Just to clarify, Josh, you said angled parking, you meant head in, correct?
That does correct, yep. So, so the recommendation from the council was to leave angled parking on the north portion, uh, but leave the head in as depicted on the southern portion. But, go ahead.
Sorry, so you're gaining eleven, we're gonna gain eleven additional parking?
You have here will gain you eleven additional parking spaces. The plan that you all wanted to proceed with was a net gain of six parking spaces.
What about the, remind me, because I remember we were talking about bike racks and/or, uh...
Yeah, so that, that space there, uh, along the, I guess, southeast corner, there were some concerns about not having enough area for parking, but I believe there is ample room there to be able to accommodate that. And as I understand, will, will probably be incorporated in our railroad crossing design.
So that, so there is bike parking here, bicycle parking?
There, there is room for that. There is not as part of this plan.
You all won't be putting it in?
Not for this particular plan, I mean.
Okay. And which corner?
It's the southeast corner.
This one, got it.
Any other question?
I'd make one comment. I di, I didn't catch the last time that that shi, center lane had actually shifted, um, southward during the last meeting we were at. I observed all the comments and, and, um, and commentary back and forth in the last CRA meeting. It all made perfectly good sense to me. Um, I agree, we have plenty of handicap space on the corners to accommodate that, to where those other spaces could you, get utilized in higher traffic, so I'm, I'm supportive of it, this go around. Thank you for the work.
And, and, and I do want to clarify, so, so that center lane as it sits today is basically in the center of those two island areas. Uh, with that, um, center lane remaining in the same location, you'll have a twelve-foot wide drive lane from the end of that parking space to the center line without shifting anything.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Josh, how many handicapped parking spots do we currently have and have those increased? Because I do see the two that you got marked there very clearly, but.
Those are the existing, uh, the only difference to them is they're head in versus angled.
Okay, and did we gain, of the new eleven, did we gain any of them that were?
No.
Additional handicap?
Not in this plan, we did, we do not.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Are these standard parking places or compact?
They're standard nine by eighteen.
What size?
Nine by eighteen. If you ever were to go to Lowe's, same configuration.
Any other comment? Make your most of these, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, all of, yes, ma'am.
Sorry, just one more question. How soon will you all do this if this is approved?
Uh, well, we'll take it back to the engineering consultants to give them formal direction to move forward a formal design. Be my guess, well into the, the first of next year.
Will there be road improvements?
Yep. The, uh, roadway would be milled about an inch, inch and a half, uh, and resurfaced.
What about underground utilities?
They're there.
Do we know what kind of condition they're in?
I believe, uh, one of the utilities, water line, is actually the asbestos water rain.
So we're gonna have to end up digging up that new street to replace them?
More than likely it's gonna have to be. When, I, I don't know, uh, you know, I think we're just now in a position to move forward with design, as I understand it. So it may be a function of, you know, two, three years before that happens.
Once the design's completed, the city will have ample opportunity in terms of the bidding and the process along CRA to join that into the project if we have the funding and availability to replace the line at the same time.
Is the asbestos pipes the only thing, uh, under the street or are there other utilities?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I do know that there is that water main under there.
Okay, thank you.
There's a gas line that runs underneath the south side parking spaces.
Under which?
The south side. But in terms of the, of the AC line also, I mean, there's gonna be certain portions of the city when we go to that project, uh, assuming it's allowed for some unforeseen reason, uh, you don't have to dig it, always dig it up. There's a way to drill it out and, and bore, bore beside it, through it, whatever. So it can be replaced without having to tear roads up. And that's gonna have to be the case on some spots, because we cannot afford to tear up of miles and miles of our roads and afford to come back. So, um, those that do not exist within the right of way, we're gonna have to get creative anyways, which is gonna be pretty common with a lot of, especially in the historic district, concrete roads.
It's gonna be the vast majority of our AC water main replacements.
So all we're, all we're doing is, uh, approving a design concept.
Yeah.
That is correct.
But when will we have the opportunity though to say, hey, stop, don't do this yet, CRA, because we're not ready to do the utilities? You know what I'm saying? I just don't want to be in conflict with the CRA.
Well, I mean, I, I would say that if, if you guys, uh, approve this concept tonight, then that pretty much gives us the green light to move forward with the design so that we can quickly get this finalized and out for bid and constructed. The, the hope was to have this done before the mistletoe market, obviously well beyond that now. Um, I mean, if the council desires, we, we don't have to mill and resurface it. We could go out there and do what we try to do with the street painting and remove the stripes and wait to mill it and resurface it until the water main is, is ready to be replaced. I mean, it's totally up to you, but if I were making a decision, there's no way I would do that, so.
So that last sentence again?
I said if I were making a decision, I would not do that. I would not recommend waiting to resurface it and going out there and blasting the, the striping off. I would, I would go ahead and pay the, or allow the CRA to pay for the, the milling and resurfacing, so it all looks fresh and new.
Mr. Irvin, there's certainly no reason why, obviously this won't come up during your tenure at this point, but there's no reason why the CRA could not advise the city manager when they plan to let such a procurement so that he can advise the council.
Not, not a problem. It will have to be advertised like we do any other procurement unless the, the value, uh, is less than, than the threshold, which I don't think is gonna be the case, but.
But even if it is, we're still gonna have to have public procurement through that method.
That's correct.
So once we get quotes, that can be addressed. And the city would have the opportunity then if they wish to talk about the replacement at the same time.
You got a hand raised?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Rob Hamilton, for the record, I was really trying to just sit down and be quiet, but, um, we have an opportunity to get something done, finally, just something done. Uh, I, I do understand the idea of, well, let's wait until we can do everything all at once, but my favorite analogy with that is if you have a, a cracked windshield on your car, but you might not replace that windshield because you might have to get tires and you might have to replace your engine in ten years, are you gonna wait to fix that windshield or are you gonna fix your windshield?
Yeah.
This is a windshield. This is something we can fix easily and relatively quickly. I know there's a, a process we have to go through, but it's something we can get done that should have been done a long time ago. Now, if you're happy with the hopscotch board we have looking out there right now, then leave it the way it is. But if you want to get it fixed, let the CRA, who has the money to do it, get it fixed. There's no reason to sit here and, and go back and forth twenty times. And I'm just gonna add one more thing. I think it'd be really, really helpful if we did more than one joint meeting with the CRA and the city council. If we can get that to a point, we're doing it quarterly, so we can have these conversations at those meetings and not waiting until the CRA is ready to do something before you guys give us input. It might make things happen a little bit more smoother. But on top of that, there is a, an optic right now of the CRA and the city council just butting heads at every meeting. And I don't know if y'all are getting tired of it, but I am and the CRA board is and the public is. We should be working together to accomplish things. There's a lot that the CRA can get done if we're working together, but if we keep fighting and going back and forth, nothing's gonna get done.
Thank you. Am I looking at this right? Y'all are taking the angled parking spaces and put us straight in and straight back. Do you know what that's gonna do to us old people? I mean, really, are you thinking about that?
Yeah, we've been talking about that.
Well, I haven't been part of that, but why did we decide this?
To increase parking places.
Uh, increase parking spaces and accidents and what else?
Everything you just said.
I mean, really, let, let's stop and think about it for old people, because I, I guarantee you that this, I can't park like this. That straight in and straight out?
And I brought all that up in the last time we talked about.
Then why were you, why, why aren't we still talking about it then? You know, there's a lot of old people here in this town.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
We got your name for the record, sir?
I'm Keenan Powell.
Mayor. Okay, so the last time we talked about this, the compromise was the angled parking for that very reason, the senior citizens. And I thought that was a nice compromise. And then that's out the window and the emphasis that I was trying to impress was senior citizens. Angle parking is parking friendly for senior citizens. And I still like the compromise half and half, half angled, half straight in. So.
May, mayor, may, may I address the, the question? So the reason that we brought this forward is we had a parking study. And in that parking study, this particular block, which happens to be the busiest block, was reaching a hundred percent occupancy at various times throughout the day. The parking consultant studied this block and recognized that there was a lot of depth here, unlike the other adjoining blocks. And as such, found that a reconfiguration of the parking from angled to head in would add an additional parking capacity that would hopefully alleviate, at least in the short term, some of the congestion. So that's why we have presented this. We did not dream this up on our own. This was included in the parking study. This was included as a cost-effective measure to increase parking capacity by twenty-six percent with minimal expense. So what we have here is the opportunity to increase parking by a eleven spaces by simply reconfiguring the way that parking, uh, is conducted there. This is not an unsafe practice. It's a typical and it's meets the standard. Again, if you go to Lowe's, this is how you're gonna park. If you go to City Hall, this is how you're gonna park. So to say this is unsafe or dangerous is just not fair to the engineering consultant. The engineering consultant is not gonna produce a plan that does not meet the standard. They're gonna sign and seal the plan attesting their certification and their license. So this plan is safe. This plan meets the standard. So I, I, I don't really understand why there's such reservation about head in parking. I get it's changed, change is, is hard. I don't like change, but we're not gonna produce something that doesn't meet the standard.
Any other question, comment?
Josh, did you say earlier that the center line would not be moved? It would be in the same place?
So the, the center line is almost within the, the, the middle of the two curb areas along the south and northeast corner. So there's very little room for the center line to shift without altering that island in the curving. So where that center line is today is more or less in the middle of that space.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd be willing to say that that drawing that we're looking at, that center line has shifted and my decision's based on the way that that drawing is, is laid out. Um, much like Mr. Powell, I prefer angled parking. However, I realize that the compromise is worth it here because there would be additional parking on, in, in that area right there. If I prefer angled parking, I'll park on the angles on the side streets. Um, and that's why I made the comment about the handicap spaces on the end. But that center line on that drawing is shifted compared to where it is to date downtown. So it does provide adequate spacing so that you can make those right ninety-degree angle turns and get in those parking places, from what I see.
Yeah, and with the finished product, you know, like after it was milled and, uh, covered and then, I guess, striped, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Stripe is gonna be equal from one parking space to the other, as far as what's the center line, or those curves gonna prevent that from happening.
So right now, when, when I actually measured this today, from the edge of the angled parking space that you have now to the center line is twelve feet.
Yeah.
From this drawing here, from the edge of that, uh, parking stall, um, to the center lane is twelve feet. So the twelve-foot standard is gonna be the same whether it's angled or whether it's head in.
Yeah. So two things, what Josh just said, I think really needs to sink in, whether it's angled or whether it's straight in, it's twelve feet. It's the same amount of room to back up no matter what. Number two, as someone that's, as a citizen, participated in the CRA meeting, I was impressed that our CRA, who is representative of this city, because it's, it is people from this community that are working on our CRA to better our city, I was impressed that they were concerned about this being cost-effective. They weren't just willy-nilly doing projects that were put in front of them. They were counting the cost and looking at it and saying, if we don't get the maximum amount of value out of this, we're not interested. So I commend them for wanting to maximize our tax dollars at work and to improve the downtown, which on a regular basis, as someone that sits on the next block and regularly observes that all of that area completely full, gaining these spaces is a benefit to everyone, not just certain businesses. It's a benefit to the thousands, if not tens of thousands of people that use that block on a daily and yearly basis.
Okay. Any other comment? Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Kitch. Um, I don't have a problem with this plan as long as y'all leave some of the angled parking on the side roads, like they said, and maybe the other two blocks. That will, somebody who really has struggled parking this way, they can move on down. But what I do have an issue with is I'd like to see a little more handicap. We have a lot of elderly in our community, that being a busy block. Um, and I also want y'all to think about, I was downtown recently, your little paint job over them letters when the governor sees it, we're getting fined. It's coming off. It's coming off, but the letters underneath are not. So the paint job we did, there ain't no hopscotch. There is no hopscotch, the letters are bleeding back through. And so I think this project needs to be done, so we're not giving money away that we don't have. And I encourage all of y'all to vote for this project, but remember that you're gonna keep or increase handicap spots easy for people to get on sidewalks. Um, I've realized after my daughter had major surgery, how important a handicap spot is.
Hmm.
Nine screws in her foot, so it was, uh, fun, but y'all need to deal with this road thing before we start getting fined by the governor, because y'all don't have the money.
Hmm, thank you.
Mayor, if, if I would just add, regardless of whether you have regular parking spaces on the north side or an accessible parking space or two, the count will remain the same. So in other words, if we were to add two additional accessible parking spaces to the middle of the northern portion, we would still have the same amount of parking spaces, eleven. The difference would be two of them being accessible. So if there's a desire to do that, we can do that, it's the same amount of parking spaces.
You mean to add two more?
That's correct, in the middle.
Where in the middle, Josh?
Pick a spot, just right in the middle.
And you're saying on the north side, not on the south side?
That's correct.
Why would you, oh.
Yeah.
It's the closest to the bill.
It's closer to the building.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, Josh, you're just simply gonna stripe those as handicap, right? There won't be the curb cuts and the additional walk lane and all that stuff.
There would have to be curb cuts to, to, to meet the, the standard, uh, and a five foot wide gore in between the two spaces. What we're making up the difference on that gore, as you'll notice, the gores to the left and right are fairly wide. So by adding the additional um accessible spaces, that five foot wide aisle would be. Spread across those two stripe gores that are there, that are there now, so they'd be shortened.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't, in other words, you wouldn't lose any parking stalls by having two additional accessible parking spaces within that northern part.
Go ahead.
Josh, I'm for the plan. I don't have a problem with what you're presenting with the net gain of eleven. Here's where my problem lies is when the discussion came up with the foundational work of. Us having to replace something underneath that ground once you do the milling and the surfacing and the striping. So Mike, I don't know who my question is to you, Kobe, or what can we do, why they've got the road tore up to fix whatever is underlying. In that, in the space that they're gonna do, because I, I don't wanna see us doing it twice. And that is where I'm struggling in my mind, not because of what they brought forward. I think that's a great use of what the CRA does. But I do have a foundational problem with.
Well, I would mention, we can coordinate, we'll coordinate with CRA um when they plan to do it and, and the bids and all that type of stuff. Um, and they coordinate with uh Anchor who's doing the AC water main design. Assuming there's not any conflict with us replacing individual pieces of AC water main, which I don't see why there would be. If it's not a big of a deal, the city could go in and replace it ourselves. We're gonna tear the road up, you know, replace it, fill it back, pack it, and they're gonna mill it and cover over it. So there's this ability for us to work together and to be hand in hand at the time they mill it up, for us to dig it up, replace the line, and then pave back over it.
But my question will be, I don't wanna see them held up with timing and/or can we afford it at this particular time? Because now we're gonna have to go figure out where, how much that would cost so that we can coordinate it in a timely fashion with what they've got. Because we probably didn't put that in your.
Yeah.
Budget. So that's where I'm struggling. Like, how can we do that and still be timely and allow them to continue the project?
We just coordinate with, with Anchor on, on the lines that run through there. Um, again, they're not that far in design, so we just have to be where their anticipation is on the line. Is it gonna stay the same or upgrade to a bigger size? We have the funding in R and M for water. That's where we anticipate some of this in R and M for these types of things. On top of that, we had a healthy reserve set aside this year in the water budget for, again, it can be used for things just as its nature. So I think the funding is gonna be there. Uh, we just coordinate with Anchor and C E I, I mean, and CRA at the same time uh as this is going on.
Okay. All right, so.
Mayor.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So when you grind the street down. Is that when we would replace the pipes if needed?
Yes, sir. Well, we'll, we'll grind it down, work with CRA if that's in the time.
Let, let, let me just clarify. So, so milling is an inch to an inch and a half worth of surface. That's it. So this much, just to get down to a layer of asphalt that can be repaved. We're not trenching, we're not digging up the roadbed. We're simply just lowering the asphalt enough where a new layer of structural asphalt can be placed on top. If there is a desire to do a water main replacement, that completely changes the scope of what I have before you. The scope that I have before you tonight is a simple milling, resurfacing, restriping. That's what the task order is with our engineering consultant, three non-screwed. If, if there is a desire to add more to that scope, that is certainly fine, but it lengthens the time to get there.
And my suggestion is not at your cost. I'm suggesting that the piece that I'm talking about would be our cost. Does that? Still impact your time? Because I don't want your timing.
I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know what is involved in replacing that, to what degree it needs to be replaced to, what, what, I, I, I don't know. So it's hard for me to say. All I can say is with this particular project, it's fairly simple. The engineering consultant could probably wrap this design up here in the next two weeks, get it out for bid. Have it out for bid for thirty days and probably be in a position, hopefully, to issue a contract to a contractor by the first of the year. I would think a project this small, they could probably knock, knock it out in a couple of months. So that puts us February into February, March. You know, we have thought about some constraints as far as work hours. We don't wanna disrupt the commerce in that block. So limiting construction through Sundays or evening hours is something that we're considering, uh, putting in that bid package. So that makes it a little bit more difficult as far as timing is concerned. But, you know, this particular project's simple. If we wanna add layers to that, we can. Not a problem. It just adds more time and cost.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I don't mean to sound mean. I don't mean to sound curt. I'm on my third dose of migraine medicine today. I think we've made it abundantly clear that we want the city manager, who is more than competent and capable, to work with the CRA to coordinate this. Let's vote, please.
Okay, any other comment? All right, I'm gonna close the floor for comments. All right, uh, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Aye.
I was Carrie. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, good deal. Okay, we're going to, where are we right now? We're on uh citizen comments? Is that where we are?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, the floor for citizen comments, uh, please give you up to three minutes to make a comment. And uh, yes, sir, come on. And we will uh, uh, please state your name and if you represent an organization, do that as well.
My name is Rick Rule. I'm here on behalf of Crudiak. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's been thirteen years since we talked to the council and the mayor about having a Grow Fest. We brought it to you happily for the last twelve. We've got a thirteenth coming up in the, next year here on the January twenty-fourth. Thought it might be nice to pop by and say, I don't want any money.
I like that.
But if you have any questions, um, some people don't really realize what our organization's all about. How we work and what we do. Um, number one is fun. Number two is community. And number three is charity. And so we are nonprofit and everything that we do, we direct toward people that need help. Um, we work in conjunction with the Women's Club. Um, we do Christmas parade. We do Halloween on the Circle. And spend thousands of dollars on candy for these kids that come around three times. Um, and of course, the Grow Fest event that we started, um, it's a lot of work, but we do it with pleasure. And so we thought it'd be nice if I just popped in. If you have any questions that you wanted to direct, have any. Issue or anything else that you might wanna know about, I'll answer it right now. I am currently the vice president. I did six years of president, so I know a few things. Been there for fourteen years. Anything at all?
I'll just make a comment that you guys have been overboard trying to, you know, help us, serve us and uh work with our city police.
Yeah.
And uh, kept everything very orderly. And so I, I greatly appreciate what you do and, and uh, hope you continue.
Well, we'll try. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. And that date?
Twenty, uh, twenty-fourth, January twenty-fourth.
January twenty-fourth, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Kitch. Um, I went in here earlier when the gentleman talked about the senior homes. I don't wanna say thank y'all for approving that. Um, I think we will get our return in water and taxes and other things, so I do think that was a good project. And I think it's very, very needed in this community.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Martha. I can't believe Donald ain't got up yet. Uh, come on.
My name is Dexter Dunn. I've been standing this county here for too many years now.
Okay.
I moved back to Chris here. Welcome, my general law enforcement officer. Can't be at work with police department around this county.
Say again?
Welcome, my general law enforcement officer. Cannot work here in Walton County.
Well, I have no idea.
See? Everybody don't have no idea.
Yeah.
Ain't gonna say no more about this county.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the floor for comments and we will move to uh Ms. Hevlin with the uh. Did I miss somebody?
Clay.
I don't have anything.
Okay. He'll usually put a note out there.
I'll catch you if it.
All right, Ms. Hevlin?
I brought forward um, uh, a copy of the letter to the editor from Sunday. I think it was October first or the first Sunday in October. And then I've gotten several calls and um. I wanted to begin by acknowledging the CRA plays a valuable role in improving our community. But tonight, I think we've reached a critical point where we, we need to reassess perhaps the purpose and fiscal sustainability of our CRA. You know, the CRA, I've said this before, is now proposing to borrow about ten million dollars. They've got a contract out now, a request for proposal. And in my opinion, that's gonna place the city in serious financial distress. And we currently have no emergency reserves built up. We have no sustainable plan to provide fair raises for our staff and no dedicated capital to address our most basic needs. Which is clean water, reliable sewer systems, and essential infrastructure upgrades. Now, at the same time, I think we're facing the possible elimination of property taxes next year, which the governor's working hard to get past. And if that happens, we all know that's the main funding mechanism for the CRA. So before we can even consider taking on new debt, because that will become the debt of the city if the CRA is successful.
No, ma'am, it won't. We've covered.
Clay, let me finish, please.
No, no, ma'am, we're not.
No, stop.
It's about the city's financial responsibilities.
Elected official. This is my opinion.
Mistating the lawmaker. This is absurd. We've covered this. She's misstating the city's debt obligation. In that scenario, I've read the statute out loud. If she's wanting to disregard Florida statute, then I'm gonna interrupt her. Yes, ma'am, that's.
Mayor, I am the elected official. I'm not asking for his legal opinion at this point.
Okay, finish your point.
It's the time to focus on the basics, to invest in what our residents depend on every single day. Water quality, sewer reliability, and emergency preparedness. And those are not optional services. They're foundational to our public health, safety, and confidence in this local government. We cannot afford to continue funding a separate agency that borrows millions of pro, dollars of, to do projects. That don't directly address the critical priorities. It's both fiscally and morally responsible to return these funds to the city and direct them where they are most needed. Given these realities, I propose the council take the bold and necessary steps. I'm proposing to eliminate the CRA entirely and redirecting all available funds back under city control. Or they can be used to address the urgent tangible needs of our citizens, in particular, our water and sewer infrastructure. And I'm urging my colleagues to consider this proposal seriously, not as a political matter. But as a matter of sound governance and stewardship of the tax dollars, tax dollars that we're in charge of. So that's my proposal.
You've got a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second. Any questions or comments?
Oh, I got.
Go ahead.
So for six years, I've been pounding this dais about a flat budget. That's the simple solution. For six years, if this county or this council maintained a flat budget, we would not have been in this situation that we're in. You know, the, the letter that was attached references reserves being low. Interesting thing about that is that is a, a twist of the facts, AKA modern parlance, that would be gaslighting. There are no designated reserves when it comes to the general fund. There are reserves when it comes to our enterprise funds. To say that unrestricted fund balance in the general fund functions as a reserve is a twisting of the facts. If there were designated reserves, then there would be an audit finding, which there hasn't been for multiple years. If our reserves were so supposedly dangerously low. The second thing, and I have asked this this year already. If you wanna eliminate the CRA, you wanna return that one point one million dollars, not the one point four and the one point seven that gets commonly referenced. The one point one million dollars. What are you gonna do with that one point one million dollars? And then what are you gonna do to plug the hole of the two point eight million dollar transfer that we now have? If you wanna have a serious conversation about infrastructure, let's have it. But when you talk about infrastructure, are you talking about roads? That would be general fund. Are you talking about parks? That would be general fund. If you're talking about water and sewer, those are separate funds. And those funds have the adequate and necessary reserves. And they have adequate and necessary um money in them to do infrastructure improvements. Case in point is us signing the loan to the asbestos water main. You can't get more current than that. We're replacing our asbestos lined pipes with, with water funds. And we're signing an S R F bill on them. So let's have a conversation about infrastructure. But I haven't heard that. I haven't heard anybody bring forth any sort of proposal other than, oh, we just gotta get rid of the CRA. Oh, we can't do, we can't do this, we can't do that. Again, like I asked for earlier this year, give me the plan for that one point one million dollars and I'll match it. I'll support you, because I agree, we should have reserves. I agree, we should be addressing these issues. But the CRA is not the silver bullet that, and it's not the, the boogeyman that is constantly presented. Now, also in that article, it mentions some legal and ethical concerns. And I wanna go on the record as saying, there are none. No one on this council has received CRA dollars. And even if they did, it's not illegal to receive CRA dollars, because that is not doing business with one owns agency. The CRA consists of citizens of this community that are appointed by us. That is not doing business with one owns agency. If you wanna get into the ethics of it, none of us control more than two percent of the, of the impacted area. But let's go a step further. These improvements that the CRA are doing downtown, whether it's the, the alleyway, whether it's the parking, whether it's the amphitheater. Those benefit all of the citizens of not only Defeniax Springs, but the surrounding communities. So there is no direct impact on anybody downtown. And, and those are facts. It is not illegal, it is not unethical for, for the CRA to do things downtown. And I wanna make this very clear. If you want to say that there is something nefarious and there is something illegal or there is something unethical going on. You have been put on notice that that is simply not true. I have not received one dime, one penny, one cent from the CRA. If you continue to make those statements, I think you'll find out, just like Tucker Carlson versus Dominion Voting Assistant, how that works out for you. So do that at your own legal peril. I think it's disingenuous to say that there's no dedicated funds for clean water for employee raises. The city manager was tasked with addressing the two point eight million dollar transfer. And yet here we sit, not implementing what was proposed. Here we sit, because it would have meant making some serious cuts to the general fund across the board. Evenly applied, consistently applied. So I'm, quite frankly, I'm sick and tired of the, the gaslighting, the manipulation that is going on with the facts. When it comes to the CRA and the city's overall health.
We have beat, let me get that up closer. We have beat this horse to death over the CRA. And yet we hear it time and time again at every meeting. Robert's rule of order. Um, Clay, if a vote has, and I realize this is different this time, this motion is defunded all the way. But we voted on, do we maintain the current level of funding for the CRA in this budget year, the budget year that we're in today? And this council, council as a whole, the voice was, we continue to fund at the existing level. We cannot sit here like we have a crystal ball and factor what the legislature is going to do with the funding levels for abhorrent taxes. We already know that we're in the hole when it comes to abhorrent taxes for funding public safety period out of that general fund. It cost us six, six point one million dollars and we take in two point eight roughly. So we know right off the bat that we're in the negative on that. That's why everybody's water bills are so high, have been for all these years. We have to come up with ways of funding it. We, I've been here for a little over two. We, I've been here for a little over two years now. And one thing consistently that I've spoken about is I want to see the infrastructure fixed in the city, water and sewer. Within the first weeks of me being on this council, I went out and found out from various departments how each department is carried out. What are the issues? What have we got to fix? How can I help? Let's try and figure this out. And the simple fact is, we're doing the best that we can. I view to see, at first, I thought like Ms. Hefflin did, strip them of funding all the way down. They can't do anything if if we cut their funding level. At that point, it's like, what good can I do with the funds that you've given me? They're taking on the capital improvement projects for the city. If those funds were cut by any percentage, that funding that comes back goes into the general fund, we will eat it within a matter of a couple of months. Something's going to break, and we're going to wind up spending it. And turn, these businesses that are downtown, the one hard part about this job is not to speak about liability sitting right where we're at, because we can be sued for anything that we bring up. But let's state the facts on a couple of things. We have sewer issues downtown. Those businesses get backed up. Those businesses have to close down. They have come in here and stood right where Ms. Kitch is and told us about this time and time again. The good thing is, they haven't sued us over it yet. But if we don't fix those issues, they can. We have issues with the fire department. We have issues with this facility. We've got to fix these things. But the thing is, we we shouldn't sit up here time and time again and hammer the CRA when they're actually trying to work on those capital projects for us and fix some of these things. There are a group of volunteers. Either way you look at this, these people, we go, sure, we go out and ask them, will you serve on this board? But these are people who volunteer their time to sit on those boards and hear all these same issues. But yet, Mr., just like Mr. Hamilton brings up and has brought up time and time again, he stands before us and hears us beat them like a dead dog. And yet, we're asking them to do things for this city. I commend them on the service that they're providing to this city. I thank them for the time that they put into this, because they're not getting paid for it, they're getting beat over the head with it, and yet they keep doing it time and time and again for us. That's all I've got. I I do have a question about Robert's Rule, though. I would like counsel to clarify that for us as to what what remedies there are for that or how the rules work.
So ultimately, the motion, nothing can be done this year. Because we're in October 1, I mean, what's happening this year is done. We've agreed, we've funded it. There's no way that that motion could be taken up to undo what this council's already done. It would be inappropriate for somebody who's on the losing end of that motion to bring it up. I interpret this motion to be something that would take effect fiscal year 10/1/26, which would be next October. Therefore, I believe under Roberts, it's appropriate. If the motion is actually to stop it right now, then no, that motion's already been defeated to take it down. This is just another attempt at the same thing. I don't believe it would be appropriate to revisit it, because the issue of funding, of what level we funded, was determined when the budget was passed. But I'm interpreting this to be a request to defund the CRA effective next fiscal year, but I'll allow the councilwoman to clarify.
Mr. Mayor, I want to say, this is not a comfortable conversation, and it brings out the ugly in a lot of what we're saying. And I know it's passion, and we're all trying to do the right thing as to what we believe is the right thing. So I just want us to stop and think about how our decision, whatever it's going to be, it's going to be, how it's going to impact our future.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think all this is is the communication problem. Rob Hamilton suggested workshops again. Quarterly workshops would not be a bad idea, or more often if if necessary. But that, to me, that is the key to making this successful all the way around, is communication. And so I'd like us to get back to those to those meetings, and it's just like the amphitheater project. Sure, it's a big project, it's a big loan. Alleyway, all these things add up, and it does make us nervous, but we we personally, I'm I'm confident that this will will work as long as we keep those lines of communication open. And we know where we stand. The reason for their existence is to help this city. So I don't think they're going to go in opposite direction of what the city wants, as long as we have opportunities to express what we what we want, what we need, and what would be the most help to the city as a whole. That's the whole reason for their existence. So the the workshops, to me, are are critical to keep that communication open and and make it work.
Go ahead, Dan.
As a compromise, would the council consider instead of being 95% of the increased abhorrent tax go into the CRA and 5% to the city? As a compromise, would y'all consider to help our finances at the city level? What's the lowest the CRA can get? 55%? And that would give us 45%? Is that the way it works?
Well, if that, if you were to pass a motion, that wouldn't take effect till.
October 1, because that motion's already paid.
Yeah. And the thing is, is like, you know, I've I've had situations, I used to vote sometimes. And and I gave that up. I gave it up, and I don't regret it. But anyway, and you know, you'd be on the losing end of a vote. And it, sometimes when you think it was a very, very important issue, it stings a little bit. But you've just got to swallow it and move on. You can't keep bringing this back up and just wearing the, you know, the internet up, the newspaper up, the council up, the people that come here. I mean, that, and and that's just really, that's one of the reasons that rule is put in now into Robert's Rule. And now, of course, you brought up a little bit, you changed the language a little bit this time. But still, it's like, you're bringing something up you lost. And I seem to be very passionate about it, and that's fine. But, you know, passion, it needs to be put to bed sometime. Go ahead.
Amen. Mr. Mayor, this is something that the community has reached out to me. They've written in the paper, and and that is, I'm okay with being on a losing end of a vote, and I understand that happens. It happens quite often to me, as you would see if you go back and look at history. But this was something that the community wants us to talk about, and that's the reason I brought that forward. And like I said, this is not a comfortable conversation. I mean, I don't want to bring this up. I don't want to keep bringing it up, but it just, it had to be said. And it is, it is what it is at the end of this this vote, so.
Mr. Beerbaum. How how much reserves do you do we need? What's what's the dollar amount?
I I don't want to have a debate, but the auditors tell you that you should have three months of operating expenditures set aside in case of the event of an emergency. That is a standard policy for any city.
Okay, so I did the research and found out what that would be. I know that answer. It's either $3 million or $6 million. So I will support a motion that will reduce our transfers from the water and general fund so that we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul when it comes to infrastructure, so that we can then establish some reserves. But that's going to mean cutting at minimum $2.8 million, if not $3 million, from the general fund. I will support that. I'll I'll make the motion right now if you want to.
You have a motion on the floor.
I can make a substitute motion if I so please. Let's have, if if we want to have difficult conversations, let's have difficult conversations. If we want to establish a three or a $6 million reserve, I'm all for that. I have talked to countless city managers about it at this point. I'm in support of having a reserve for our general fund. And again, I want to state on the record, we have reserves for our water and sewer. They are adequate, and they meet what they are supposed to be. I support a reserve for the general fund.
The general fund is in case for emergency, not the water and sewer fund.
How are we going to get there? That's what I keep asking. If you're going to take either $1.1 million or, as Councilman Cosin brought up, $550,000, what are you going to do with that money?
I think we're moving in the right direction. We need a finance director that can put these things.
You're you're not answering my question. What are we? Yes, ma'am, it is. You are an elected official sitting at this dais. Go ahead, call the question. Let's see how that works.
That's fine. We're going to have a public comment, though, Mayor. We can't call the question to eliminate all public comment.
Okay, Mayor. Glenn's got a comment.
And we have not actually voted to call the question.
Go ahead, Ms. Kitch.
Well, I'm going to let him go first.
Well, speaking of a finance director, I mean, anybody that's considering applying for that job might very well be listening and watching our meetings. It could very well be the problem with hiring a finance director. So, you know, I would like to see us move forward and be positive and optimistic and work hard to make these things work that we vote on, because we have that responsibility. And I'm going to lose votes in the future. But I came into this with 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 a view that if I lose a vote, that's the way this country rules, majority. And if I lose a vote, I try my best to make it work like everybody else. I might have lost the vote. And but but that's just me. But I I would, I would ask that we 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 do that, because we are trying to hire a finance director. We spent so much time on the on the description of the job that we we didn't, you know, we didn't get anybody hired. But it's it's time that we move forward, and we we present ourselves in a in a way that that would make somebody want to come work here.
Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Kitch. So I want to say that when all this started about the CRA funding, I spent a lot of time speaking with multiple people. And while he left, Josh, I called him and I sat down and I went through all of it. And I came to a grave understanding that y'all can't bond the money. You get that money back, you can't bond it for projects. That is a big difference. Our goal now, because we lost the vote, we beat a dead horse, we lose everybody, including the audience, and that's where we're at. I spent six years on a project with this city, and I finally gained it. But I couldn't beat them at every meeting. I couldn't beat them at every turn. I had to pick my battles. Robert's Rule says you pick the battle, you lost, you move on. You get next year to bring that battle back up. But what I want to see happen is us pivot, and let's focus on the infrastructure. Let's focus on the needs before the wants. I'm sorry, I would like an amphitheater, but we need a fire station. We need a fire station, and I want them to bond the money for the city's needs, not their wants. And since I only have a little bit left, I want to talk about the downtown project, the back alley. There is rumors going all over this town that, oh, it's going to benefit and raise the property values for this man. And he knows, I've had one conversation, I think, with him about his car. Correct?
I think so.
Have I ever called you?
No.
Okay?
No.
I shop at his store. I have never met Reynolds Henderson, but here. But I will tell you, it is the city's responsibility to take care of the alley. It is not the owners. And I'm going to give you a paraphrase of that. I ran a hockey league in Pensacola for several years. Hockey league, children's. And it's still going today, but we had to work with USA Hockey out of Colorado. And the the what the Civic Center, which is now the Bay Center, presented, and what the county of Escambia County presented, was a contract that said if we brought the individuals to the building and they fell in a pothole, they needed to sue us and not them. Well, you can't farm out liability. Am I correct on that?
Cannot effectively farm out liability. We have sovereign immunity.
So that is what my USA Hockey, even though we fought on it every year, eight years in a row for six months. Why can't, why can't they? Because the hockey league's not going to repave that pothole, because it's not our responsibility. It's city or county property. We're not going to do it. All of these people that you are talking about are in the same position. Just because that's their their way of making a living does not give us a right to dish them or say that their property value is going to go over or something that needs to be there and operate correctly. And it's not fair to the other citizens out here who have businesses with sewage. So I'm, I want to put an end to it, and y'all move on.
Thank you.
Well, I, for one, Mayor, wanted to be very clear, since you mentioned it. I hope my property values don't go up. I don't particularly want to pay higher property taxes. But I feel quite confident that the property values of downtown Defeniax go up. They soiled the alleyway improvement. It'll be true for all of the parcels. And last I checked, we had roughly 83 parcels in the downtown business district between 11th and 4th that go between 90 and Baldwin. If we look at how many of those there are, I'm assuming the value of all those are going to go up equally, and that is not a disproportionate or special private gain or loss. I second Mr. Beerbaum's statement that if there is some suggestion that there is any type of conflict of interest, misuse of public position or otherwise, that that is completely inappropriate in a case like this. And, you know, while I've not had anybody directly ask me that, I can tell you, I don't vote. And the board votes in public on what they choose to do. But if we're going to get into the spot of saying paving roads in this city is a disproportionate benefit to the people who live on those roads, we're not going to have very many roads paved, because we all live on some roads in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Those properties that may benefit bring in far, far more taxes than one residential property. And I think people need to consider that. That's, I'm just responding. I was sitting in the CRA meeting when they voted not to do the alleyway. Two things came up after that. Number one was the city's request that they reconsider that and do it. Number two was the fact that there were public health concerns about sewer backing up in the in the alleyway. And, you know, that's very expensive. It's growing and growing and growing in expense because of your preferences to put this underground and to do that and do the other. And that's the reason they may need to blow to bond or whatever they're doing to get more financing. It's not them, it's what you want, and it's what is best for the city.
Thank you.
Actually, I have something prepared for this one. Rob Hamilton, CRA board member. This issue has been discussed, debated, and voted on multiple times. The outcome was not unclear. The majority made a decision, and that decision needs to stand. Yet here we are again, circling back to the same conversation under a new headline, "The Future of the CRA." Let's be honest, this is not about the future. It's about trying to undo a vote that didn't go someone's way. That's not leadership, that's obstruction. At some point, we have to ask, how many votes do we have to lose before we move on? Because dragging this out does not make you look stronger principled. It makes you look weak and unwilling to lead when the outcome doesn't suit you. Good governance means respecting the process, even when you don't get the outcome you wanted. Bringing the same issue up, meeting after meeting, doesn't make the result change. It just makes the city look divided and distracted. The public sees it, the business owners see it, and frankly, the CRA board feels it. The CRA was created to invest in this community. It can't do that if it's constantly being used as a political punching bag. So let me say it plainly. The council's already decided, the vote was taken, it's time to accept it, move on, and let the CRA do its job. Every time we waste another meeting, relitigating the same issue, we're holding the city back. The people of Defeniax Springs deserve a lot better than that.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
We got a motion in a second.
A motion, and that's Amy's motion, right?
Okay, we have a a motion and a second on the table. All on the table say aye.
Nay. Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Nays carry. We will move on. Okay. Now we're to Mr. Scoggers on his CRA appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A month or so back, I had a position that was available for, or vacant on the CRA. The council voted with me to appoint Mr. Joyner to that seat. Mr. Joyner had to resign based on some personal issues. So that has left me with a vacancy again. So this time, I'm coming forward to council with a local resident, local businessman, someone who cares as much for the east end as he does the west end and that he does for the downtown area and the things that we talked about here tonight. It's someone who believes in the focus on blight, which was what the council was originally tasked the CRA to combat and the things that we've spoken about here tonight. He's someone who is committed to supporting public safety and taking care of some of the issues that Mr. Hamilton and Ms. Kitch have talked about in the past, right here before us at the dais. He's someone who also understands the liability that comes from us not fixing some of these same issues that we've talked about here tonight with infrastructure. So he, I believe this individual would focus on the capital projects that we've tasked the CRA with combating and getting. So I believe this individual would focus on the capital projects that we've tasked the CRA with combating and getting accomplished. And the key word there is getting accomplished, not just let's go through the layers of bureaucracy forever. So with that, tonight I'm recommending and asking council to support me in a motion to appoint Mr. Donald Graham to the CRA.
Second. That's motion and second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Nay.
Aye.
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 Ayes, Carrie. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Now I need to say something about Donald. He's killing.
Thank you very much. You know, I like to be, you know, quiet, but I also, at the same time, at the same time, being quiet is gonna turn into a surprise. So I appreciate it, the opportunity to be on the board. I'm proud to represent the city of Dufeniak Springs. And I'm coming with positivity, tivity, facts, and to get things done. Because we don't waste a lot of time going back in the past. Let's go to the future, infrastructure, the fire department, improving the city, east side, west side, north side. So that's what I'm here to do. And just, you know, when you call me, I'll be there for you. I'd like to thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, Mr. Beerbaum, airport input.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So through some of my activity related to the EDA and the airport, receiving feedback from businesses that could potentially be interested in the airport and all that that brings with it, there's been a couple of things. And I think it's important over the, over time, as we receive this type of input, that we respond to it. Because I think it, quite frankly, puts us in a better position. If businesses are asking for something, then I think we should respond to that. So with that, I would like for the council to consider directing staff to pursue a four-digit official airport identifier code through the International Aeronautical Civil Organization. I believe that's the correct acronym for ICO, ICAO. And then also, I wanted the council to just simply acknowledge that there is a long-term plan that once we get beyond 5,000 feet with the runway, we have a beautiful new terminal and we've widened the runway, we've expanded the runway, and we see hangars 18, 19, 20 built, that we would, as a council, acknowledge the fact that the logical progression would be for us to continue our path of growth that would allow for eventual Class C and D approaches into our airport. Now, what are Class C and D approaches? Basically, Class C and D approaches are what they call IFR approaches, instrument flight rule approaches. And so obviously, at that point, that would mean we would have to meet a litany of requirements from the FAA. It's not something we can technically do ourselves. We technically have to prepare the airport for it. And then when we're ready, the FAA says, congratulations, you have met all the requirements. You now have Class C and D approaches. So it's not so much anything that we have to do tonight as it is just simply acknowledging that that is the long-term goal. That is the direction that we're headed. And then simply directing staff to pursue an actual official four-letter designation for the airport. So what I would like to request is for staff to pursue the K-54J designation as well as to evaluate pursuing a KDFS, you know, for Dufeniak Springs designation as an alternate, if we could get that approved. We may or may not be able to get the DFS designator approved. But I would just like to make that as a motion to direct staff to pursue that and then at least have some agreement and discussion with the council on the long-term approach. Again, we're talking very long-term, that we would eventually obtain those Class C and D certifications. So I'll make that as a form of a motion for discussion's sake.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Amy.
Didn't we have a conversation where we asked for the DFS to come back, by the way?
We did. Staff, there's a form you have to fill out with the FAA. But since then, like I said, maybe Councilman Beerbaum has conversations with a particular entity. And so no need to, for me, I don't see why we duplicate work. So I think if we're going to pursue the four, then we might as well do them at the same time. I think that was what he talked about with the alternate.
Why would, question for Todd, why would you want 54J before the DFS and the alternate to be DFS? Why not try to get the DFS as the primary?
I would love to get KDFS. I think that there might be some concerns about whether they'll grant it to us. My understanding is it's a little bit easier. We already have the 54J and depending upon how you search it, K-54J already shows up. And from my research, it's already implied that we are K-54J. And when you search it online, it actually comes up that way for some databases and then other databases it doesn't. This business entity simply pointed out that in certain airplane databases, we don't show up as a four-digit identifier. And in their point, their viewpoint, getting that four-digit identifier means that we have stepped up our level from just a sleepy regional airport or, you know, small airport to we're taking that next step.
Would you consider flipping those and making DFS the primary to staff and your 54J, which we already?
Sure, sure.
Because I could support it then.
Yeah.
Full heartedly, but I would like to see that KDFS.
I would too. I would love that.
As the primary on, because I think we are up and coming. I think that is our ultimate long-term objective.
Is the K, is it mandatory?
Yes, that's, yeah, that's the.
So any airport based in the US is prefixed with a K.
K is the American.
KDFS.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'll amend my motion that we pursue KDFS as the initial request.
Second.
Fall that back. I think he's already seconded it.
I'm in the second.
But again, just maybe also part of my motion is that as a council, we are affirming that long-term, we want to see our airport grow to the point that we then obtain those Class C and D classifications for approaches.
Out of your research, what does that entail? It's not a tower. We don't need a tower, correct?
You don't need a tower, but there's a pretty extensive list from the FAA of equipment that we would need. And then obviously, we would be working with our friends over at Eglin to establish those approaches.
That's gonna be the big one, making sure Eglin allows clearance for IFR approach.
And again, this isn't something that's gonna happen tomorrow. This is more about the council saying, as we cast vision long-term, and when I say long-term, I mean probably 10 to 20 years, that this is where we want to go. And the business just simply wanted to hear that that was our direction. So I told them that because that topic had never come before the council, I was not comfortable confirming that. I wanted to bring that back to the council and have the council actually vote on that. And so that's why we're having this conversation is because I didn't want to misrepresent the council's long-term desire and goal when it came to those Class C and D approaches. And again, it's basically just, do we get instrument approaches? Because right now, it's VFR, visual flight rules, which means they can't make approach into the airport unless the ceilings are at a certain level. Whereas with C and D approaches, IFR approaches, they can go down to a lower minimum to actually land.
All right. Any other comments on the airport identifier? All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
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 Ayes, Carrie. And I'm glad to kind of talking a little bit longer about our perk certification because, you know, our, one thing I want to say is our airport staff, our manager and several others, they are deeply engaged for the next year and maybe a year and a half. I don't want to put anything else on their plates in regards to that airport that we have to, we need to chew what we've already bitten off. That's a lot. All right. Okay, well, at this time, Toby, what you got?
Mayor, only update I have, the visitor center, the bathroom update there. If you've driven by, you've seen they have poured the concrete for the ADA ramp accessibility. And we do a walk-through tomorrow, kind of see some of the work they've done inside. They replaced the front doors. So hope to have that done here very soon and in use for around Christmas reflections and tour of homes and stuff. So hopefully, we'll get that done.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
County. We appreciate the TDC, TDC project.
Yeah. I was trying to figure out what that big old bright red and white piece of equipment they dropped off out there in front of the depot.
So this morning, I was coming to work, I seen a bucket truck and a wood chipper. So I pulled in there and I got out. And the man almost said, I said, we get really nervous when we see wood chippers in the lake yard. I said, so what are we doing? And they said, well, we're, you know, we're contractor FPL. There was some trees behind the vacant building there that was interrupting the power lines. They were cutting them down. So that's fine, but yeah. We get nervous when we see things like that.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay, then we'll go to.
That's Harris.
I'm so glad to see pavement on 3301.
It's coming. Good. Lord have mercy.
I've heard a lot of complaints about it. We're getting there.
Dan?
Are we talking council comments now?
Yeah.
Okay. I wish you were still here, but as many problems and bumping heads as I have done with the CRA, I would like to say that Josh and I have maintained a friendship and understand he's leaving us. I'd like to say for the record, he's done an outstanding job. He's represented the CRA in a stellar way. He has done his absolute best. I understand he's going to the county and that his position is being considered to be filled. And we look forward to that position being filled in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next thing is, our next meeting is gonna be, it's gonna start at four. It's gonna have an airport workshop.
Correct.
So I want to put a little information out here to the public on what we're looking for, or at least what I'm hoping to find in this workshop, is we want to hear things that, if you think this is gonna hold us up and there's anything that's on the radar that would prevent December 31st, 2026, from us being complete of all of our obligations and not losing any money, that's what we want to hear. If you come up here and say, well, we'd like to have a concession stand in the terminal or something like that, that's irrelevant. We don't want to hear any of that. We are so laser-focused right now and there's so much money at stake to make sure that all of the agreements that we have to make, all the requirements we've got to meet, we make that deadline. And we don't lose any money and leave any money on the table. So we're hoping to get a lot of public feedback on things that maybe we haven't thought of. But so far, I've been checking into this and attending a few meetings and I think we're heading in the right direction. I really do. But I'm always open to any outside opinion, especially professional opinions, people who's in the aviation field. So that's a little heads up on our workshop coming up. The PA system, I've heard from multiple people, it wasn't just Mr. Powell. But maybe it's because we're not leaning up and talking into the microphone. Maybe it's not a technical problem. Maybe it's our problem. And Greg Krishan, I told you that I would put your concerns on the agenda. Kobe asked me to hold off on that, that you and him are gonna have a meeting. And Mr. Powell, the same with you. You were, I asked you if you wanted to be put on the agenda and you said you and Kobe are gonna work that out. So I listen to the public. If the public comes to me with a problem and they're not getting satisfaction at the city level, then I'll bring your concerns to the dais. So that's all I've got.
Okay. So as the representative on the EDA, I did want to update. We met on Thursday, conducted interviews for the next director for the EDA. And we extended a offer letter or voted to extend an offer letter to one of the candidates that we interviewed. Everyone was thoroughly impressed with him, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping he is engaged in negotiations and we will have some positive news there on who it ends up being. But there was unanimous support for the candidate, so I think it's gonna be a fantastic candidate. He's a local candidate and he's heavily invested in our area. I do want to say, again, unfortunately, there is a particular item with the EDA that I'm under a little bit of a non-disclosure agreement on. But I want to compliment the EDA. So we had an opportunity come in through a state agency that got passed down to us. And the coordination between the EDA and the city and the school district and Northwest Florida State College and many other entities that I have observed over the last two weeks was nothing short of absolute professionalism. And I think, quite frankly, we've already heard, we've already heard back, our opportunity, our presentation pretty much took us to the top. And I'm hoping to share some positive news very soon. I'm literally waiting any day for some positive news there. But I want to thank Mr. Hughes because he sent, he sent a gentleman that represented the school district well. Mr. Brown from Northwest Florida State College sent someone from the college that represented college well. And I remember when I was giving them a tour of Dufeniak and I was sitting in the backseat, they even complimented, they said, wow, our education, the education system here is even willing to do X, Y, and Z for us. That's impressive. And they've since told us that our proposal pretty much ranked us at the top. And we actually beat out other areas in Florida. And we actually beat out five other sites. My understanding is we beat out five other sites that had already selected that were not even in Florida. So they had originally toured 30 sites and down-selected to five. And then Florida wasn't even on their radar. And at the last minute, we became on their radar. They looked at three different sites in Florida. They have supposedly selected us as the finalists for Florida. And, but again, it is the coordination, the professionalism that I have seen out of the EDA and its partners is nothing short of amazing in the last couple of weeks. So hats off to them and thank you for all of that. That's all.
Thank you. Josh?
Everything's positive. I invite everybody to come out to the Fairness Week, looking for a good time. I know it's not necessarily our venue right off the bat, but I think it's great for the kids and the families, camaraderie. I'd like to thank Chief Graham for being here tonight and for willing to serve. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. I'll just kind of echo what Rob had said earlier. You know, we not just this city, but several cities and counties. You know, we have, we kind of turned our meeting space into just mudslinging and all this type of stuff. And then we want to keep directors. We want EDA directors. We want CRA directors. We want city managers. We want city finance directors. That's the worst thing we can do to try to bring them in. And, you know, sometimes it's much harder to do this more diplomatic. You know, everything doesn't have, laundry doesn't have to be exposed out in the public meetings every time we get together because it just doesn't make good sense. You know, you say, well, I want to be transparent. Well, you know, the scripture says that a fool uttereth all his mind. And so it's not, it's not always the smartest thing in the world to share every thought you have. Because you gotta think of what are the repercussions? So I'm just telling everybody on this dais, and if I could speak to the county, I'd say the same thing. Calm down. All right. Well, thank you very much and we'll call this meeting adjourned.